Good evening and welcome. We'll call the meeting to a roll. Joy, would you call the roll?
Mr. Wycliffe?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Bembridge?
Here.
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Geary?
Here.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with recognitions and awards. Let's go.
Good evening. I am thrilled to present our recognitions tonight. I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. We're going to begin our recognitions tonight with a community partner. I'd like to ask Heather Skunover from Community Development to come forward, along with the following to assist the recognition. Cindy Von Felb from the Aletha Public Schools Foundation. Barb Gonzalez, Career and Tactical Education Coordinator, and Dr. Jessica Dane, Assistant Superintendent. Tonight, we recognize Garmin International. And from Garmin, we'd like the following to come forward to be recognized. Katie Allgood, Jennifer Pizzolo, and Jo Kelly. Garmin has a longstanding partnership with the Aletha Public Schools, which includes the implementation of a new STEM program, providing staff to help with elementary coding activities, hosting an Aletha Public Schools Foundation's Women's Giving Circle event, inviting female students to Women and Aviation Week activities, being an adoptive school partner with one of our middle schools, encouraging employees to mentor local students, even being a sponsor of our district video boards. But most recently, Garmin has been instrumental in the new Aletha Schools Aviation Electronics Career and Tactical Education Pathway that debuted this school year. High school students attend the state-of-the-art lab at West Dennis Support Center with the same equipment that the company uses in its manufacturing department. Students incorporate work with microprocessors and have skills necessary to troubleshoot and repair industry-standard equipment. This career pathway provides students with the ability to tie into the workforce in a high-demand career. Amazing opportunities for students. Thank you so much for all you do for the Aletha Public Schools. Thank you. Next, we'd like to recognize Samantha Collins, Chisholm Trail Middle School English Language Arts Teacher. Samantha, if you could come forward, along with Assistant Principal Rebecca Reyes and Kim Dahl, Secondary ELA Coordinator. Samantha was recently recognized as a winner of the prestigious Kansas Horizon Award. These awards, which are sponsored by the Kansas State Department of Education, recognize the exemplary work of teachers during their first year in the classroom. Samantha was one of 32 teachers from across the state honored with the award this year. Just so you know, another district teacher, Bennett Johnson, will be recognized in March, so we're not leaving Bennett out. Congratulations to you, Samantha. And I believe your family's here as well? They want to stand to be recognized? And for our next recognition, we'd like to ask Aletha South Theater Director David Hastings to come forward, along with Principal Lynn Albert. David was recently inducted into the Kansas Thespian's Hall of Fame. His induction into the Hall of Fame is a well-deserved honor and recognition of the excellence that he has produced over the last 18 years at Aletha South. The achievement was recognized at the Kansas Thespian Festival held January 10th in Wichita, Kansas. Congratulations, David. And I know you have family here as well? Do you want to stand and wait? And for our final recognition, we have a special recognition. I'd like to ask District Health Services Director Sharon Morris to come forward, along with Dr. Stephen Slansky and Beth Radke from the Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legacy Foundation. The Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legacy Foundation was established in May of 2003 with a mission to provide support in the greater Kansas City area for crisis-related medical assistance, neighborhood school health grants, and health education programs and services. This fall, the district was awarded a Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legacy Foundation grant in the amount of $28,460.53. And this... I'm sorry. Sorry, not done. The purpose of this grant is to purchase additional AEDs for eight middle schools, mental health first aid training for all district nurses, and additional medical equipment for Title I elementary schools. And it will assist our district in extending access to emergency equipment during outdoor athletic events in middle schools, and will provide additional mental health training for our nurses. Absolutely amazing. The foundation has awarded $384,000 to local school districts in Kansas and Missouri this year, and we are so grateful for your support. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to public comments.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state their name and address.
Do we have anyone wishing to address the board? All right, seeing none, we will move along to presentations. Read Across America. I'd invite Dawn Mercer and Kathy Meyer.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Mercer, and I'm the Library Media Specialist at Ridgeview Elementary. And I'm here just to tell you a little bit about NEA's Read Across America celebration. Research has shown that children who read and are read to daily do better in school. Part of developing a lifelong love of reading is also giving children books whose characters represent them and who have different experiences from them. In our diverse and complex society, students need books that provide both windows and mirrors if we are going to create more readers, writers, and people who feel included and recognized, and who understand that the world is far richer than just their experiences alone. Please contact me or another district media specialist if you're interested in reading to our students during NEA's Read Across America celebration. I'm going to share with you a short video created by some of my 4th and 5th grade students about Read Across America.
A child's ability to read has a direct effect on their reading skills. Reading with their help helps to increase their vocabulary and improve their reading fluency.
Students from Aletha will join the lower end of the tiers across the country to celebrate the annual National Literacy Association Read Across America Day on Monday, March 2nd, 2020.
NEA's Read Across America Day, the nation's largest celebration of reading, expects more than 25 million readers, young and old, to pick up a book and read.
To celebrate the fun and value of reading, Aletha NEA is asking you to join us in bringing the nation a wonder to live for a journey of reading experience.
Our goal is to show America's children the joy of reading and build a nation of readers on March 2nd and Monday.
We will use books that reflect everyone in the community to help students discover their own voices and learn from the voices of others.
For more information about NEA's Read Across America and the many books we use in this year's celebration, visit www-readacrossamerica.org.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Learning Services Literary Update. Dr. Jaeger?
Good evening. We're excited to give you a couple of updates tonight, but before we get started, I just want to make a few quick introductions for the people who are with me tonight that are going to do the heavy lifting, just so you know who they are. So Kim Hawkins is with us tonight. Kim is our Assistant Director of Early Childhood, overseeing all of our early childhood programming from parents to teachers, all the way through our early childhood programs, Head Start, Jump Start in the district. So lots of responsibilities there. Linda Boxberger is with us tonight. Linda is our Elementary ELA and also our Title I Coordinator for the school district. And then Kim Dahl is with us as well tonight, and Kim is our Secondary ELA Coordinator. So the folks that work hard every day on behalf of literacy and reading in our school district. Also with us tonight is Stacy Kates, and I'm going to introduce her just a little bit more in a minute. But she is someone who's been working with the district for over a year now, who I'm going to talk about our kind of more formalized agreement moving forward with her in a second as well. So our goals tonight really are two different things. One is to provide a general dyslexia update for you. You probably know that the state board has taken some action around dyslexia in the recent weeks. I will tell you, when it first came out to us, we were kind of like, oh my gosh, look at these timelines and things. And we got over that really quickly, because the bottom line is that things that the state board is asking us to do are things that we're well down the road with here in Aletha, but also things in the end will be really, really good for our kids and the kids in our system and across Kansas. So we're really excited about the work that's going to be happening as a result of that. And then, one of the reasons why we're down the road with a lot of those things in Aletha is our $3.2 million LINK grant that we are in our second year of. Next year will be our third year. And a lot of the things that we've been doing as a result of our LINK grant help with our students who are either dyslexic, who are showing signs of or characteristics of dyslexia. And so we're going to walk through both of these things kind of simultaneously tonight. So just a quick definition about dyslexia. There's certainly a lot more information than what's on this slide, but sometimes when people hear the word dyslexia, they think that we're talking about a visual problem with our learners or students that flip or reverse letters. And that's really not what dyslexia is. It's a difficulty in what it says here and breaking the code of learning how to read and learning how to spell. But one of the things that we also know is the things that we can put in place for students who are either dyslexic or who are demonstrating characteristics of dyslexia are good for all kids, and they're good for all readers. And so it's a really great marriage for us that these two things are coming together so strongly in the state of Kansas. So just a quick walkthrough of the state board initiatives around reading or dyslexia that will impact our district. There are more, but these are the ones that we're tracking most closely right now. In November this last year, 2019, the state board approved dyslexia recommendations, so things that school districts and higher ed have to do to support reading and quality reading instruction for all of our kids. This March or next month, the State Department, KSDE, will start working on developing what the training is going to look like for all educators across the state. I say "all educators," that's actually not true, but it's the educators that work closely with reading and teaching reading to our students. It will impact folks from early childhood all the way through high school, so they're all aware of the art and science of reading and best practice around reading. So that will be coming soon. Likely, that will be a decent chunk of our pre-service professional development we do before school starts next year. And so you see up there, it says, "Fall 2020 Aletha Staff Training." So we will have a reading training of some sort that's focused on dyslexia or characteristics of dyslexia early next fall. One of the things that you hear me saying that we're being very intentional about is to say "characteristics of dyslexia," because we won't be in the business as a school system of diagnosing students with dyslexia, but we do need to be able to support all of our learners that come to us, whether they're showing characteristics of dyslexia or not, but we need to be ready for that. Next fall, also, we'll start looking at different screeners. The state right now is working on putting together a list of screeners that will be appropriate to screen for dyslexia. And there's about five different areas that they're talking about. The experts behind me could tell you more about those five areas if you'd like, but that's one of the things that we'll be looking at next fall, too, is a quality screener to look at our students across our system, so we can identify those students who may have dyslexia or characteristics of dyslexia, so we're able to intervene and help support those students as readers within our system. And then, also, next year, we're going to be working on finding resources. Again, we have a lot of great things in place right now, but we need to make sure that our resources that we put in front of our students each and every day are best practice and are meeting the criteria that the State Board of Education has given us around structured literacy. And they'll talk more about that as well. So with that, I want to introduce Stacy Kates. She's going to come up here. We had the great opportunity last year to begin working with Stacy. We are going to formalize our agreement with her a little bit more to make sure that we get all of this right as we move forward as the system. So starting this month, she's going to be in our district about two days a week, working as a resource, not only for Learning Services as we kind of cast a vision for what this looks like in our system, but also an opportunity to be a resource for schools as they work to support individual students. So I've asked her just to share a little bit about herself and her background with you tonight.
Hi, thank you guys for having me. So just a little bit about my educational experience. My bachelor's is in education. My master's is in speech-language pathology. I taught for a few years before I decided to go back and become a speech path. But while in school at the University of Kansas, I was very fortunate to work with a number of leading researchers in the area of literacy, working on a lot of their studies that have gone on to help us know much of what we do know now. I was able to then continue that practicing in an elementary school, K-8, then at Children's Mercy doing dyslexia diagnostics. My true passion is to really bridge that gap between what seems scary in the clinical world of dyslexia and the educational world, and how we can best help kids and best meet those needs. I come from a family of educators. My dad is a retired superintendent and director of curriculum and instruction. My mom taught 43 years of kindergarten, and my brother's the current superintendent. So I love helping children, and I love working with districts and helping us do the best we can. So I'm thankful for the opportunity to be here.
And she probably wouldn't say this about herself, but she worked in about five of our elementary schools with our teams last year. The response from all those schools was like, oh my gosh, she's amazing. Like, we need her all the time. So we're really excited that we're going to have her on a consistent basis in our district. So with that, Linda's going to kind of share the next pieces of information.
Okay, so we're going to start with some updates from the LINK grant. One of those portions and components of the LINK grant is our letters training. And this really goes hand-in-hand when looking at students who are having reading challenges. So letters training is almost like a college course. It doesn't have a product that goes with it, but it's building teacher knowledge and knowing the direction that we're going. We have to build this teacher knowledge. It's not all teachers receive this training while they were in college. So we've started out with early childhood. We've had the luxury of having two people trained as facilitators. And what that will do for us is we have an in-house trainer that at any point in time when we need to train our teachers, we will have an onsite expert with us. We also have had all of the resource teachers in all K-12 buildings trained in a six-module training, so they were able to analyze and really understand the different components within letters training. We also have brought on the non-title buildings with our K-1. We've started to do an early intervention focus when you look at anything with reading challenges and dyslexia. Early intervention is key, so that's why we started.
So our next steps, as you can see, is just to continue adding the letters training and getting more and more staff members this information. We're going to hopefully reach all of our early childhood teachers very soon. Additional K-1 teachers in our non-title buildings, and we will continue to work through adding the secondary teachers as well. We also have another goal of finding some key people who can be facilitators or trained to be facilitators at the elementary and the secondary level.
So another component of the LINK grant that builds on that is 95% Group. 95% Group is actually a company that's based and was founded on letters training. Only the next step with this one is they actually have a product to support that instruction. And so this year, we're focusing on phonological awareness and phonics. And once again, that's targeting that early intervention, so we can help catch some of those students who are having reading challenges and give them explicit instruction and strategies to move forward. It also provides us with a screener that diagnoses exactly where the breakdown of reading is happening and then leads our teachers to the exact lessons to support them with. Right now, we currently have it up and running and impacting students in 18 elementaries and one middle school.
And I'm sure you're noticing a theme, but our next steps would be to add additional buildings and be able to provide the resource and the training and the coaching that goes with 95% Group. We're seeing a lot of success and excitement, so we look forward to what next year brings in terms of getting this out to more buildings. My turn, sorry. So outside of those things, we're also doing some other exciting literacy topics with our grant. One of them is in early childhood. They had a very successful opportunity to train with the New Teachers Center around PLCs, and it was very popular and actually led to the State Board of Education asking Dr. Kim Hawkins to come and present on how that went. We're also touching a lot of teachers and students with Writers Workshop, K-12, which is an exciting thing to have something systematic to give our students a common experience, K-12. We are also having lab sites, which is sort of job-embedded PD, K-12. They look a little different in the elementary, middle, and high, but we're finding some great success there as well.
All right. Bring us home. Additional things that we have as we thought through all the pieces of the LINK grant and all the pieces that are supporting just good literacy practices, and things that will also support our dyslexia initiatives as well, is the availability of Sunday systems in our schools that's based on Orton Gillingham, visualizing and verbalizing training for our teachers. We have over 50 reading specialists as part of our school district team. We have had a district dyslexia team in place for several years and support from Stacy over time. And again, in '17, '18, piloted a screener, continued discussions about that. And now, with the support of KSDE, really looking forward to what a screener brings for us and our ability to support all students that struggle with reading.
Can I say the last one first?
Please go ahead.
Overall, our goal, all of our goal working with students is to advance their literacy skills. And what I love about as an early childhood person is that this is targeted birth to grade 12, so even our youngest learners that we're supporting, their pre-literacy skills, their reading and their writing skills as part of our school system. So Dr. Jaeger would be happy to entertain any questions.
I was going to say one other thing, but you know, we have been really gifted by being a recipient of the LINK grant. You know, Dr. Dane, several years ago, with the team in Learning Services, was able to have the foresight to put some of these things together. And if you've been tracking the things over the last couple of years that you've approved based on funding with the LINK grant, it's been a significant lift. And you know, one of the things that we look at with 95% Group and letters training and so many of the things that we're doing, those things are excessively expensive in a system with over 30,000 kids. And so it's because of Herb Wirthoth and others at that time to really realize we got to get some of these things in place that really has positioned us so well to embrace what the state board has done, to move forward with that work and support our students in our system. So I didn't want to miss an opportunity to say that. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I had a question about, like, how many... What's our total number of kids we have that have been diagnosed with dyslexia or diagnosed, right word, but so far? And do you anticipate, like, do we anticipate that number increasing significantly as we put screeners in place? Or we think we're catching it pretty well?
So 20% of, it said, research-based, that 20% of the total population does have dyslexia. So when you start to think of a district of this size, the numbers with actual diagnoses now, I don't know those exactly. But when you think about the potential for a number of individuals out there, it's there.
And that's one of the reasons why the state board has talked about structured literacy and the art and science really behind reading, because for most folks who have dyslexia or show characteristics of dyslexia, a really strong quality reading program will make the difference before you have to go to a 504 or an IUP or something like that to receive the support that you need. So it's a great question.
So what do these screeners look like? Is it a person or is it a technology-based? Tell us a little bit more.
So Stacy will kick me or something if I'm inaccurate about this, but most of the screeners that we're aware of are screeners that happen one-on-one with students. Yes, okay, good. She agrees with what I said, that's good. So that's at least what the folks at KSDE have shared with us, that that's what they anticipate, is they have kind of approved lists of screeners for us to begin to look at.
That's great. And then, so we don't officially diagnose ever? We just kind of say you have the jurisdiction of dyslexia?
Correct. Traditionally, it's been considered... There's a common misconception, and a lot of people say it's a medical diagnosis, but the better terminology is clinical. It has an ICD-9 code for dyslexia, like other disabilities like autism or even obsessive-compulsive, some of those neurobiological disorders that are similar in nature. So it's a clinical diagnosis, but it has an educational treatment approach with that. The pieces that they're incorporating into those screenings, which will be a specific area that needs to be assessed for that potential by a certain age.
So I'm trying to think of the institution overall, college. Right before you met... Yes, responsive centers, thank you. So is it like somebody like responsive centers that would be diagnosing?
Right, actually, according to the International Dyslexia Association, there are only two entities that are able to make that diagnosis. And it's either a clinical psychologist with extensive training or a speech-language pathologist with extensive training. When they say extensive, it's extensive. I studied for a number of years at KU, and then even when I went to CMH to do that assessment, it was still a six-month shadowing within that department. And same in our private practice. You can't just walk in, and it's a very lengthy and intensive battery of two to four hours, six, five to seven assessments. So, yeah.
Okay. Can you speak a bit to how this interacts with including pre-literacy skills? How are we going to address that?
Absolutely, as far as the district, or?
The goal, I'm looking at the goal. Is that something within our capabilities?
Absolutely. So pre-literacy skills, just embedding, again, just like Dr. Jaeger said, the more quickly we can identify that risk and the more quickly we can intervene, research shows we can decrease those that continue to have very serious negative aspects by three-fourths. So embedding those phonological awareness skills and giving very explicit direct instruction early is best, to really see those numbers be reduced and how severely they're impacted.
And if I could jump in just real quick to follow up on that, probably the best thing that came out of No Child Left Behind was the focus on research around literacy, and we now know far more than we ever did before. There was a huge investment, and it truly is rocket science in what we need to do from a structured literacy component to help students. Why, we've talked tonight about dyslexia, which we need to, and as a dyslexic, it's long overdue. As I watch my struggles, and I'm glad the state is finally beginning to put some emphasis behind it, but we probably should have been doing this five years ago or so, which I'm very proud of, Olathe has been ahead of the cusp, knowing we need to do what's right by our students and trying to put it in place. But it's that other 80% of our students as well, that when we think of letters training and those aspects, all of our students benefit from this, because it's really helping teachers understand how do students acquire literacy? How do I determine why a student is struggling and what's the best action to take? Because it is very, very complicated, and it's not something that the schools of education have prepared teachers for as they leave school and come to us in the education world. So it is a huge training aspect. There's no, if we just use this reading series, it solves all the issues. There's not, if you look at the very best literacy series, they all have gaps, and that we have to plug what that might be, if it's around phonics or whatever that might be. So this is going to be a work in progress that is going to take us years to develop the foundational training component, and we will constantly monitor and adjust as we move forward. There's no quick fix to this, but at the same time, we also know that if we are progressing and doing what we need to do, our students can be successful. All of our students can be successful, from the foundational early literacy components to the types of interventions that we need to have in place. So the team we have put together and the plan that they're taking a look at and moving us forward with, I think will be fantastic for the students in our district.
Did you say there's not typically IEPs or 504s just as a result of being dyslexic?
We're both looking at each other, like, who's going to answer that question? It's not that there can't be. So a student at times, depending on whatever diagnosis they have, they could be a student who needs specialized instruction, and so that's what would result in an IEP. For many students who have dyslexia or demonstrate characteristics of dyslexia, as Mr. Allison said, with strong reading, structured reading programs in place, many of those students, maybe that's what 75% was, you said, 75% of those students in one of those two areas would be okay moving forward based on having that quality reading instruction in place. Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. One other thing that I might note, and this is to follow up on Mr. Allison's comment, one of the State Board things that they shared with us also is that colleges, starting in 2024, will have to start embedding this training into their teacher prep programs. So for a few years, it's going to be on us, but they're not too far behind us in terms of us hiring folks that they graduate, that are coming out of college with some of these skills as well, which will be great.
Other questions? I would just say I appreciate the work and the foresight to, you know, seek funding to make sure that we can do these things. I love, you know, this is like so many other things we do, research-based, data-driven, but also kudos for having the, look, we've got a lot of talented people here in this district, but it also takes something to recognize where we might have a gap and bring in more expertise. So I just want to say I really appreciate that. It would be one thing to just be compliant and check some boxes, but as we do, this is striving for excellence, so I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, moving along to the consent agenda. Everyone's had a chance to take a look at those items. Is there anything that members would like to pull off for further discussion?
I'd like to make sure you notice that we changed the end-of-the-year meeting from last time. After I spoke with B and F, they thought it might be a better change, so just want to let you know.
Thank you for that. If there are no questions, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve consent agenda items numbered 5.01 to 5.11 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Schultz, second by Mr. Geary.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
All right, moving along to action items. Looks like we've only got three here. Do we have any questions or comments on any of these? All right.
I would move to approve action item 6.01 through 6.3.
Motion by Mr. McCune, second by Mrs. Felter.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
All right, future action items, you can see trips and some other projects. Excuse me. As always, I just encourage you, if you have questions, go ahead and get those in so that we can get you answers before the next meeting. Information written, the Head Start Director's Report, and then I open for topics for discussion. Any board members?
I have one, I want to, I'm glad Cindy's still here, and the Taste of the Town event hosted by the Olathe Public School Foundation is coming up on March 28th at 6:30 PM. It's on Facebook, it's on the website. The thing about this is for every $50 raised through this silent and live auction, one student gets to see a mental health provider, and that student is usually either not insured or underinsured. And so yay, home run, come, bid, and let's earn some money for these kids. And thank you to Cindy for being so excellent and organizing it, thank you.
Well said, I'm looking forward to it. Others? If not, we'll move on to superintendent comments. Mr. Allison?
Just a couple of comments this evening. One, again, just to reiterate the work that the LINK and our literacy teams are doing, I think is exemplary. The other Samantha Collins, who was Horizon Award winner that we recognized tonight, but one of the fun things about that award is it is recognizing those top-notch new educators, but it's a surprise to them. Why, they're nominated by peers and have to submit, they don't find out until there's a surprise phone call from the commissioner, and that's one of the, one of my favorite things to do when we do have that Horizon Award winner, and we were able to do it this year during our district in service. So they had no idea, to come into the conference room, see the superintendent, some others around, there's this panic look on their face, and then the commissioner comes on and tells them that they've been recognized and what that means for them. So it's a lot of fun from our end, but an incredible honor for our teachers. And then the last piece is, we want to remind everybody that February 13th is the Spelling Bee, and always, I'm always amazed, because I'd sit there and know that I would be out on about the second word of the entire spelling bee, and to watch how much hard work those students have put in and to develop the skills that they have is always impressive to see. So with that, that concludes my remarks.
Very good, thank you. And we will require an executive session, 20 minutes?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Move the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing individual personal performance pursuant to non-elected personal exemption under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM in this room.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Beveridge, second by Mr. Geary.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune? Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
And your group 6138, again, same one last time.